All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Joel. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Conflicts, disclosure, any? Okay. Public communications? No public communications? Before we get started, Lori, you're good to go. If we need you on anything, we'll just give you a call, but that way you can get some other things knocked out. Thanks for coming down to get us started. Let's go ahead and turn it over to Jim to get going. And actually what we'll do here, just a quick explanation for everybody that's watching on Bearcat TV later tonight. Unfortunately, just due to technical difficulties, we were unable to broadcast the meeting live. We will try to put out the information through individual Facebook posts or information out through staff members that the meeting will be uploaded later tonight and hopefully any individuals that have questions can refer back to the meeting. We really do appreciate Mike Wiley coming down here on all of these meetings and putting in the time and volunteering and helping us out because I do think there's a lot of good information that gets out in the community with the people that watch this. So, thank you, Mike. And if you have questions or concerns, we are starting a little bit late today because we tried to get this thing going the best way we could. With that being said, let's go ahead and turn it on over to Jim and let's get right into the return to school plan. Okay?
Thank you, Tom. I'm not gonna read through the whole plan. I believe that you guys can all read and anybody that's received it can read as well. Just know that this plan is changing. It's gonna change just probably on a daily basis. The draft that I sent out on Friday to parents and staff members was actually draft number three. And over the weekend, I did receive information via the survey as well as some emails from staff questioning some things and that's what I was hoping would happen. There are parts to this. I've used different pieces and parts from different districts and when you start using multiple resources, there's a chance that you'll have some conflict, maybe some discrepancies between what one part says and the other part says, even though I've read through this many, many times. I will say that the charts, those were referenced from another district and I have to be honest, I did not review those extensively prior to putting them in the draft. Those are more for visual, I believe, for people and that was something that I would eventually get to. I probably should've gotten that taken care of because there were some references to other districts in there. So if you noticed that, that's why it's in there. It wasn't a purposeful mistake. It's just something that I had not yet gotten to. The black and white part at the top, the first nine pages, that's what I really wanted to get worked out prior to having all of the visuals taken care of as well. With that being said, there, I will go through the plan just briefly talking about some things here and there. And if you guys have questions or comments, please share those. I do have the comments that were shared via the Survey Monkey as well as some changes. I do have some highlights and have some notes that I'll share as we go through them. The most important date is that we are actually going to start school on August 20th. That's our plan. Thursday, August 20th. The back to school barbecue, we have not, we're going to cancel. There are some discrepancies between whether or not we should do a full-blown visitation for all of the elementary students and really kind of the consensus that we came to right now is that perhaps we do visitations for maybe new students and/or the families that truly want to come in, meet the teacher and look at things versus, let's say, all 24 students in third grade. Do it by appointment, those that contact the school at once. That's something I will do that versus all. If you have something you wanna share with that, you certainly can, but that's better without that. I had in here a bullet regarding the homeroom teachers, seven through 12, checking out Chromebooks via the appointment. Little bit of change there. We're hoping to get the juniors and senior Chromebooks actually out within the next week. And the reason we wanna do that is because they, many of those students will start dual credit classes. We wanna get those devices to them sooner than later. So, to do that, we're probably gonna have like one specific morning where we just tell kids, use social distancing. We'll have a pickup location and it'll be first come, first served. As you come in, we'll get you your device and just remember the social distancing. We'll probably have one or two people that are gonna assist with that. The rest of the Chromebooks, we're hoping to get handed out the first or the second day of school. We believe that we can have homeroom teachers take care of that or first block teachers take care of that. There's some guiding principles. These are very similar in most schools' plans. One of the things that I wanna remind folks is that we want this to, we're gonna try to do reasonable things. The decisions that we make are hopefully reasonable. We don't wanna be too far to one side, too far to the next side. We wanna find things that are reasonable, that make sense for what we can do in school and our goal is to be in school. The family expectations, obviously there's like nine or 10 bullets there, but I did highlight some that I think are more important than the others. They're all important. Please know that they're all important. But probably the most important thing is that the parents are monitoring their student's health. They have a cough or they have something that's out of the ordinary and we need to take into consideration folks who have asthma, the folks who have allergies, those types of things. We understand those things. But we just want people monitoring their children's health closer than we probably ever have in the past. And also, the best prevention, the best prevention still to date is washing your hands, not touching your face. The simple things, that's still the best prevention for this. I haven't seen anything that's told us otherwise. We do want people to send their children with a mask. If they're unable to do that, we would like to know that so that we can provide masks for them. There will be some parts and we'll get to the mask part later on. And then we just want you to trust us as a school board, as a community, as a school. Trust us as a staff, have some faith in our plan and faith in our system. And we will, we will listen to you if you have genuine concerns. So. We've got a list of the symptoms. I think that's pretty general across the state from one school to the next. There is some information that I did include here that the very first draft that you folks saw as board members has school exclusion and return to school after exclusion. And I've already seen a couple of discrepancies here that our school nurse and Brianna Oddland had identified and so we're gonna work those things out. One of them is if you look at untested, the last item says at least 10 calendar days have passed before you can come in. I'm not sure if when this was written by the district or the community that wrote this, that it was supposed to be all three of those things that occur or any of those things that occur. You run into some issues where if you have symptoms but you haven't been tested, I think there's gonna be always a question. And it's okay, how long should these kids be out of school? And who is the authority that says they need to stay home? Is it me, the superintendent? Is it the school nurse? We have those decisions that we have to face and we will face. But there's a few discrepancies there that we will try to work out as well. By the way, I have a draft started for a table of contents so these pages will be numbered. There'll be a table of contents. I started that today. Facility preparedness, several things there. We do plan to get bottle fillers. We won't be able to get them for every single fountain in the building immediately, but we will hopefully get them as soon as possible. You have to know that many of the items that we are looking for as a school district, so are all the other districts. And so there's possibly a possibility for back orders. What I would recommend to parents is that you send your child to school with two water bottles. They can be these disposable water bottles. I would say, send those in a bag and then they can just keep their own water and worry about their own water. A lot less chance for any sort of cross contamination. We really don't want the students using the water fountains to drink out like normal. When the bottle fillers are in place, there's still a question whether this particular rim on this bottle is gonna, you know, cross contaminate. But there shouldn't be any touching or anything like that. So there's still some inherent chance that you could have that with water fillers. But right now, the water fillers appear to be the best way to use versus using this as your normal. We will have hand sanitizer in every single classroom. We do have sanitizer dispensers on order. We have some already in the building in certain areas. We will continue to install those as we get them. But there will be sanitizer regardless in every classroom, either in the pump form or some other form so that there's a dispenser in every classroom.
Will we be able to get plenty of product as the year progresses? I mean, are we stockpiling some or?
We're gonna, we're gonna get as much as we can and have as much as we can have on hand. So, our normal vendors have told us, if you can get it somewhere else, get it. So, there's no issue of them saying, well, you know, hang on, we'll get it to you as soon as we can. They're saying, if you can find a vendor where you can get it sooner, then go ahead and get it because it's, in the long run, it's gonna be better. I do believe that the products can be usable regardless, whether we use it or we can share it with somebody else if we have surplus. But that's an excellent question. Sanitizer, I think we're fine with sanitizer. We have, the adult masks are here. The student masks have been back ordered and those are all the disposable ones. I did put in a purchase for reusable children's masks. According to the vendor that I was working with, which was a local one, they had some 300 in their warehouse over the weekend and I ordered 100 this morning. Should be here within one to two weeks. So.
So are you responsible for keeping track of all this stuff, Jim?
We have a-
The hand sanitizer and the masks. I'm making sure that we have enough.
Excellent question. We have converted the wood shop to our storage center. I advertise where it's at, but it's under lock and key. We've changed the lock so that only a master key will work. Mr. Zane, he usually has some items in there. He's going to have to ask for permission to get in there because he doesn't have a master key. We don't want any students going in there. We have a master list of what our inventory will be and anybody that has a master key that does go and get items will have to mark off who and what you've taken so that we have a master inventory. And that's how we plan to do it. We will have some things dispersed to each of the three buildings that are all interconnected, but the majority of our supplies will be in one location, secure. So. And that is so that we can keep a better monitor on where we actually have our supply.
So Jim, go ahead.
And the purpose behind my question in our business, what we did is we dedicated one employee, this is your job, to not only order and keep track of what we have on hand, but also who's using it and who's not using it to make sure that, hey, this crew, you better get, you know, start using this product.
I would say unofficially that is Rebecca Burns, Becky Burns. She's our high school custodian. She's kind of been in charge of the mass ordering for two, three years now anyway. And so she's the one that's actually submitting the orders to Hilliard and the other vendors and then also keeping track of what the mass inventory is along with Lori O'Farrell in the business office. So we know what's coming in, what we have on hand. And then, as I said, we will have a sheet on a clipboard that keeps track of who's using what and from there we'll deduct from the master list to keep track of our inventory.
So Jim, my question for you is a couple of parts there on the materials. I had a couple of parents inquire. They said their kids, back when they were in grade school, they used to always try to help out the elementary teacher that had that class by bringing four extra boxes of Kleenexes and extra hand wipes or something along those lines. A, they inquired if, now their kids are out of grade school and so they weren't gonna be bringing in, you know, to Ms. Luenga's class. Where can they bring that and drop it off? Is there a place the school can accept donations from anybody in the community? I think it's fair for us to say if people wanna drop off, for example, even like the hand sanitizer. I know that one of our staff members tried to line up stuff from an ethanol plant that was giving it to law enforcement, I think for free. We thought schools would get it, but then it was-
We didn't qualify.
Seventy-five bucks a gallon or something like that. It was, it was a different number. We didn't qualify for it. But if there's something out there, I mean, be more than happy to take it from our patrons. I think there's been some interest in helping out the school, whether it be masks, hand sanitizer, Lysol, any of that stuff to help out our teachers.
Any sort of cleaning supply that would help disinfect for the COVID-19 is certainly would be acceptable. We do have a good surplus of cleaning supply because we purchased a 55 gallon drum of a particular spray. And, but if somebody wants to purchase masks, children's sizes, medium sizes, adult sizes, and wanted to donate those to the school, whether they're disposable or reusable, I think the reusable would be preferable because this could be a long-term situation where we do utilize masks. Those types of things we would certainly take. The best place to probably provide for them to deliver would be probably in the business office or maybe the elementary gym. We could leave the gym open and let people just drop things off possibly. The business office is the facility, or the entrance is open during the school year, or, excuse me, during the summer. So.
Would you want her to trace where they're coming from when we say donate?
You refer to their suppliers, whoever somebody gets it from?
Yeah, approved suppliers or, you know, when we start passing through hands or whatever, it's gonna go through one person here or something.
Or another place to get it if we need more of it? A different supplier, if somebody finds a supplier, brings it in? Say, hey, we didn't even know about that.
Typically, when people bring stuff in, most of the time it's anonymous. They're not worried about getting credit for it. But we could ask if they, if they could let us know what vendor they got it from or where they got it from so we have-
If something came up, someone, at least we could trace where that went or-
Yep.
I know it's gonna be a lot more work.
And it's very possible with, you know, when I say that the reusable masks might be a little bit more preferred, well, Grandma, whoever, might be the one that made those and so, you know, there's really no trace as to where the material or whatever came from, but, but yeah, we could certainly keep track of that as best as we could when people do bring things in. Other things that I have on here for the facility preparedness that I think are worthy of, just so you know and our community knows that we're looking at a lot of different things. I've talked with at least three different vendors regarding HVAC units. Apparently you can put foggers on your HVAC unit that will send this spray out in the middle of the night and it will kill the virus in the evening. Extremely expensive stuff. I mean, Johnson Controls is one that I talked to and we were looking at like $130,000. And the reason it would be so expensive for our school and probably, by the way, the items or the stuff's not available. It's backwork six, eight months. Six, eight months, we might be out of this. I don't know that, but we might be. We have so many different units. We have one very large chiller which takes care of the majority of the building we're sitting in, but then you go to our 50s wing. Those are all individual units that are rooftop units. You go to the middle school, those are all individual rooftop units. And in the elementary, you've got two or three different larger units that take care of the most of it. But there's a unit for the kitchen, a unit for the commons area and the old gym, or the elementary gym. And I think there's two more units for the classroom area. So, to retro all of that, it's really not feasible and whether or not you can get all of the equipment and installed within the next year is questionable. So, but it's something we did look at. There are some portable foggers apparently. Every school that I talk to, nobody can seem to get any on time or probably won't get them by the time school starts. There's other UV lighting and I was just contacted today by the folks that did our LED lighting project. They now have LED lights that have some sort of a UV mechanism connected to them. I'm not familiar with how UV works, but apparently it can kill certain things in the air if it passes through the lighting. I'm not well versed in it. The UV lighting that we were looking at, the units that I was looking at were mainly to put into classrooms and it would be extensive and expensive for that. So what I'm hoping to do is if we do actually do anything with UV lighting is maybe we can get some portable UV lights. For instance, if there's a, let's say, a case in third grade down in the elementary, we've gotta clean that room. We obviously are gonna go in and do a deep cleaning with disinfectants and everything else, but then maybe we could have a portable UV light that could be used in there for a couple of nights when nobody's around and could also add more protection. Again, I'm not well versed on that. Maybe a science teacher would know more about that or they're Googling it right now or whatever.
I don't know.
Those are other things that we've been looking at for the facility preparedness. We've talked about propping open doors. What I plan to do for the secondary level, because we have, we have high school kids that come back and forth from our current tech ed building. We also have students that have work for these. We have students that are off campus for senior experience for visitations or internships, things like that. My plan right now, the way the system works for the security doors is you have to push the button to activate the system in order for our secretaries to open it. Now, there is another method to do that without them pushing the button, but it's like a series of six or seven clicks. And so, we either do six or seven clicks with every single student that comes in or then we, our other options have a bottleneck. Wait till there's a bunch of kids there, which we don't wanna do. Or perhaps we just open the doors. So right now, my goal is to either I will step out or I will have somebody designated to step out and prop the doors open between classes. And we're gonna stagger classes K through 12 when it comes to moving about the building. So, we're not specific on how we're gonna do that. I'm looking at an alphabetized situation at the secondary level because if I were to pick four different classes and the physical science classroom is one of them, well, all those kids are gonna go right to the same lockers. Whereas if I do something, we have two or three different groups that are alphabetized, I can at least say I'm gonna at least have one or two lockers between each that will have some time without that bottleneck. And Mr. Luenga asked me if we're gonna do something with book bags. We're already going to say yes, book bags will be fine. We're gonna forego that security issue in this sense in order to allow for book bags so that we have less use of the lockers. It's kind of looking at one danger versus another. So that's kind of where we're going with that. And then we have some items for the middle school and the high school. We have items for the elementary. Some of the things that came up for the elementary after seeing this, we do have some students that have asthma. We have some students that have other respiratory issues that may not be able to wear masks for long periods of time. It was all over the board. I had parents that said they don't wanna send their school, children to school if we aren't requiring masks. And I've had parents that have said they're gonna homeschool their kids or they're gonna send them to another district if we do require masks. And so, we have to find the best balance. I guess we could probably move on to that. The details in the elementary, to me, that's more of an administrative and staff procedural thing that I, you know, yes, we wanna inform the parents about that, but it really is gonna come down to what's the best method when we're actually managing the student numbers and the larger groups within the facility. And so, I think we do need to consider the fact that some kids will be here before 8:00. Whether we require it, decline it, whatever, there will be kids here before 8:00 because their parents have to go to work before 8:00 and that's what they're gonna do. We've had a policy in place for the last 25, 30 years that says we don't want students here before this time, yet there are still students here on our playground or in our entrance. And that's just, that's just part of life. So we have to consider those. We have to deal with those the best that we can. And again, we want, our goal is to, is to stagger the kids coming in, whether they're coming in from just coming to school or they're coming in from recess, whether it's before school or recess in the morning, recess in the afternoon. We wanna stagger that so we don't have the bottleneck and all the kids in one place at one time.
When you say stagger, are you thinking, considering staggering the bus routes five minutes or 10 minutes or something? The kids coming in, do you see that as a problem?
You know, I don't know that that's necessary because it already, we rarely have buses that are backing up out here. I mean, some days we have buses that come at 5:00, 2:00. And there's other days that they show up at 10:00 after. It just all depends on the number of riders, the weather, different things like that. Now with them taking temperatures, I would guess, and it's not a guarantee, I would guess that that's probably gonna lengthen our bus route. So I don't know that we're gonna have as many buses coming in as early as we normally do, if that makes sense.
So if they're taking the temps of the students getting on the buses, are we taking temps of students that are being dropped off or?
You mean right to school? My recommendation is no. And I will say that it's for a management reason. If we truly are going to take the temperature of every other student, you could be looking at 45 minutes to an hour every single day. And if you wanna do that, we can. But as a management, I, I think we need to put that responsibility on the parents. We need to trust the parents to do it. I just think that it's gonna cut far too much into our school day to do that. And what do you do with all of the children? You're gonna have a bottleneck outside as you're waiting for those kids to get in line to get their temperature checked. And then when they come in, depending on who we have for staffing that's taking the temperatures, who's gonna supervise the half that are in, the half that's out? I-
You think-
I don't know of another school, other than the very tiny schools that are checking every temperature.
You think if the parents truly work hard, I mean, real hard, the first two weeks to get things right, that then you can start to relax some of the requirements? Not forego, but you know what I mean?
I think that's always an option regardless of how far you're into it.
But if they work hard to start, it's gonna help throughout the year then going forward. It's just the first few weeks is gonna be tough, I would think.
Just getting in the habit of doing what should be done is what I'm saying.
When you look at the sheer numbers, the issue that I have with anything where we're doing something with every single student, that's where you run into those bottlenecks. That's where you're gonna end up with larger groups waiting, oh, I gotta do my temperature next. I mean, I just don't know how to reasonably handle that. I mean, we'd have to have kids completely spread out on the playground before they came in and you can do it. But, you know, sometimes having kids on the playground is like herding chickens.
Loser.
So, it's not that I don't wanna take temperatures of everybody. I'd love to be able to do it. And we did look into that technology as well. We could've spent about $60,000 to $80,000 for three different systems and nobody can guarantee that they would work. They, you know, they say that you can do up to 16, 18 people per 20 seconds or something like that, so it's about a person a second. But, but there's, there's question in the accuracy of it. So. I wish, I wish there was a convenient manner. And that's, that's the other thing, the word convenient. Folks, toss that in the toilet. And that's one of the things I think we're failing at as a society is teaching children that there are parts of life that are inconvenient. We want everything so convenient, so easy and we're failing as a society to teach that to young people. I really truly believe that. I'm not saying we wanna make inconvenience. We wanna take people off. We wanna have frustrations, but we're dealing with a tough situation and you have to make, you have to make accommodations that are gonna take some time. They're gonna frustrate people. It's just not gonna be convenient.
If, in here, if a student has symptoms and they're sent home and then they're tested, what format for testing or timeframe are we looking at?
Most of that responsibility will fall on the Department of Health for the state of South Dakota.
So we could be looking at a week or a day or an hour? We don't know.
I'm frustrated to tell you that I have heard, I can't verify these situations, but I've heard in situations where people have, they've been tested and they don't hear the results for, I don't know, three to five days and-
Oh, it's over ten now.
And then you hear that they they've had all kinds of. Um connections with other people and and so. But I can't control that, nor can you as a school board. We we follow the best guidelines we can, we we use the best information that we can. And anytime that there's a potential positive case, um I don't wanna be the expert in that situation, and I don't know that you folks as a school board do. We we need to look to the Department of Health, CDC, um and and provide the guidance.
But we're not, as I read through some of this before, if someone has symptoms or ten days, I mean, we're not, shall I use the word panic and? Alright, we're gonna shut down, we're gonna continue on as we can?
That's an excellent question. Um it it is my hope that we can stay open uh as long as possible. Uh obviously, it all depends on what we have going on in our in our area. If there are cases in the area and it looks like we need to to move to a phase two, we move to phase two. If we have one case in the school, is it possible to continue to function as a school? I personally believe that yes, it is. And again, we follow the guidelines from from the experts at the state level Department of Health. There are there are steps to take for that. I don't know how they figure out who has to quarantine, who has to be ten days, who has to be tested, and who doesn't. But but that's that's not for us to decide. I I don't want that responsibility. I wanna trust the people that are in the medical field to do that.
I would respectfully submit, Jim, that as a district, I think our goal needs to be trying to have as much person-to-person contact. With the students, between the staff, uh as long as we can and as aggressively as we can. I would submit that, you know, while distance learning, you know, we did uh an okay job on the fly. And had a very admirable job on different areas, i- it's not the preferred method. And so I think as a school district, we need to be reasonable. I mean, we could have ten, twenty cases in Day County, but it doesn't affect the school district. So just whether the cases in Day County, it could be maybe it's ten cases in one grade, you know, and maybe we have uh the third grade class of. You know, blank at home for a couple of days or and family members. I I I really think that as a board, we need to give the guidance either to relax on that or to be aggressive. To keep the the district going as long as we can, to keep the school doors open as much as we can. You know, I the another thing that we can look at is what's the hospitalization rate? You know, if there's nobody in the hospital, but we've got cases, well, or is there only twenty cases? But there's twenty people in the hospital too. I mean, we have to use, I think, logic and intelligence in making these decisions and not be knee-jerk. And so I'm hoping the community can understand that, yeah. Like Larry just gave, yeah, there there's gonna prob- some kid is going to get COVID nineteen in Day County, South Dakota, more likely than not, at some point in time during the school year. And we're not gonna run around like Chicken Little at that time. We don't wanna have, you know, the sky is falling. We don't want the Facebook rumors to go wild. We're hoping that we can have reasonable conversations and 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 rely on the healthcare professionals, let them do their jobs. You know, parents, if they find their kids that are having the fevers, keep them at home. If you're nervous about it, you know, because of the different things within your family. Keep them at home. But at the same time, our mission as this school district, Mark Hanson would sit here and say, you only get one chance at a free education. And I think we need to work extremely hard to do the best we can for these these kids so they don't fall behind. I think that American Pediatric Association thing saying, hey, kids need to be in school, it's almost more debilitating to them not to be in school. I don't know what you guys think about that.
Well, I agree with everything you just said. Our number one focus has to be to get the kids in the school, but what do we do to protect them while they're here? You know, in this first couple of weeks is gonna be, in my opinion, the tricky part. If we don't get the first two to three weeks right, we could pay for it the rest of the year.
If we have a problem in a first grade class, that doesn't mean we have to.
Doesn't mean the seniors have a class, right?
Correct, we could isolate that class.
I agree.
And then move forward with the, you know.
I just think moving forward, when we put this policy into place, I think we need to focus on the first two to three weeks. Try to get it right, you know, take the extra precautions to try to minimize, because when all these kids come together at one time. In my opinion, that's gonna be the first hotspot, when you get all these five hundred students and one day, they're all coming together. So what can we do to protect them?
And it seems usually, I mean, doesn't it seem like most families, that first couple of weeks, all of a sudden, the colds and the sniffles, they all start coming back? Because we throw five hundred kids back into one big melting pot, and those and those things start going around, and then. You know you're gonna have a lot of moms and dads trying to decide, well, is this allergies? Is it a cold? Is it the common flu? Is it COVID? You know, it these are tough calls, and so. As a district, I think we gotta have the children, the parents, you know, err more on the side of caution. At the same time, understand, the parents know that we're trying to be aggressive in keeping the district open. That's what that's what this is for.
Are we gonna want parents to call the nurse or you, what if their kid does have a cold? Are they supposed to check in and say, what are we supposed to do, or are they gonna just make that decision on their own?
I don't think.
I mean, how do you make, where where do you draw the, how does the parent know?
I think there's gonna be a question with the parents, uh is this a common cold thing? Do I send them? Is this uh COVID symptoms? And that might be best answered with with the multiple symptoms. But again, I I'm not a healthcare provider, I'm not a nurse. Generally, when we as a school are dealing with something where we believe somebody needs to go home, it almost always deals with the fever. And so if it's somebody who is showing some other symptoms but doesn't have a fever. Um I I can't say that necessarily we would send them home.
See, I think that's where the parents are gonna have to have that relationship with their own healthcare provider to make that call, because. And for us as a school district, the default answer would be, well, stay stay at home. If you got the fever, stay at home. I mean, we're gonna, because you'd rather have one child stay at home or a family of four stay at home than send five hundred in. You know, and I I think we should also remember as a district, we do have a school nurse. You know, a lot of districts don't. I mean, I have feelings she'll have a very busy year, and uh everybody should be buying her cupcakes and brownies at some point in time. And sending them down her way, but I I think it is gonna be some tough calls, and when it does, you're gonna wanna send that kid home.
I agree.
Yeah, I I at least know with what I'm seeing in my career, and if somebody calls into court and they say, not feeling well today. That's a pretty good get out of court free card, uh just about anywhere you play it right now. Uh they're not even having jury trials yet in this area still. They're not calling people in for that, just because they don't wanna have these issues.
So test days, there's gonna be a lot of sick kids.
Probably could be. Somebody will get smart on that.
You know, it I would guess that parents are most likely going to be over cautious in the sense that if they do have some symptoms, they're probably gonna, you know what, I'm just gonna keep them home. Unfortunately, not all parents will be that way. But there is the reality that, you know, some some kids do have allergies. And they will have, they'll experience a cough from the allergies. They will experience uh some nasal things with the allergy, so. Um in those cases, I would guess that the parents are probably gonna know their kids well enough that this is typical of their allergies. Um versus, is this something new? It's it's a tough one, Aaron. I I wish it was easier to answer.
We're all gonna be learning as we go here, and Jim, unfortunately, you're gonna be making decisions on a daily basis that are gonna offend some people and. Make others happy, and and everybody's just gotta understand that our number one focus is to educate these kids.
And.
And and care for our staff, and that's what we have to base our decisions on, plain and simple.
And it's, you know, obviously, the kids are the number one, but our staff is is right there too. If we don't have enough staff. We can't function as a school, and so that could go.
That's a real concern.
And when you talk about uh school nurse and. She's gonna see a lot of kids that come through that potentially have symptoms. Well, what if she what if she comes across a student that does test positive? Does she have to be quarantined? If she has the face shield, the mask, can she stay? We we've had that, not conversation face to face, but she and I have had that conversation a little bit about, well, what happens? With her and her position if there is a positive case that she deals with or dealt with. Um and again, we will look at Department of Health, what they recommend. Um I will say that. Uh I I've heard some conversation about when you have a mask on versus not having a mask, and you've been around somebody that tested positive. I I think um I think your ability to possibly not have to do the fourteen days of quarantine or others is higher.
Right.
Because you wore a mask and this person didn't. I can't give you any exact uh examples of that, but that's a conversation that I've heard as well. Moving on to the masks and the face shields, first and foremost, um we want kids to be safe, but we have to be realistic, we have to be reasonable. And um when I say that, uh I've already mentioned, we have students that have asthma. It can inhibit their ability to to breathe properly, and if they're expected to wear something all day long, this isn't gonna be the place for them. That's just, um if they have other respiratory issues or allergies. I'm just gonna come out and say it. What I would recommend that we do is that we say, yes, we are going to require masks. But it's only going to be in specific situations and specific locations. Um meaning, we're mandated ma- making masks mandatory, but give us the ability as a staff and administration. To make the determination as where and when those will be worn, and I'll give examples. I do believe that on the bus, it's probably best to wear a mask, because you're gonna have, some bus routes, maybe not. But it's just best. It's a small vehicle or a small space. I believe that it's best if we're wearing masks there. I believe when we're interchanging classes, uh where there's a a good portion, even when the kids are staggered and we don't have everybody in the hallway. You're still gonna have sizable groups of people in the same area uh that are gonna be coming in close proximity to one another. I believe when you're traveling about the building, we should be wearing a mask. If there are situations in the classroom where you wanna do small group things that are not, you know, touchy-feely activities, obviously. But you're gonna be closer in in proximity, probably wear a mask. If your class, the size of it physically and the size of the or the number of students allows you to social distance. I don't know that masks are necessary. You know, I can use uh pre-calculus, if we have six or eight kids in there, they can spread out well enough, they might not need to wear masks. When they go outside for recess, it's outdoors, as long as they're not, you know, uh jumping all over each other and doing the things that you you might see some kids do. If we can keep that that type of um connectivity minimal, then then perhaps you don't need it outside. But as you come in the building, um we maybe need masks when you see those bottlenecks and those large numbers. Any other questions regarding uh examples that you might have or somebody's posed to you?
You know, one thing I've heard from the elementary level is, could we have mask breaks? Meaning, you know, is there a way that we can. Situate their days so that, you know, they they don't have to wear them all day, they can, like you say, only wear them certain times of the day. But even in the classroom, you know, is there an opportunity to social distance the desks, there is, you know, so that the kids can get a break?
I'm just saying this, that, you know, when there's independent learning going on, and I don't know how it works in the elementary, I'm a secondary person, but if there is an independent learning and there's not a lot of. Communication between the students or the teacher, um sort of a, you know, a quiet working time. If there's not a lot of communication and and talking and, you know, your the kids are several feet away, I I believe that that's doable. How often that happens during the day where there's enough independent learning, especially at the elementary, they they like to do a lot of active things with each other and and so.
I think that's where recess is important. You know, I mean, we've always talked about that anyway for physical fitness, and just getting those elementary kids out. Um I think when it comes to this whole mask issue issue, we just need to check all of our politics at the door, as somebody said. I mean, really, what it comes down to again is what is best to keep the Webster area school district going for a hundred and seventy-two instructional days? So if we can have graduation on time, that we can have kids come out of here with the right education. You know, there's just some common sense things. I mean, just as you're explaining to me about our school nurse, one, just one. I mean, to me, it's common sense, anybody comes to see the school nurse nurse this year, you're wearing a mask. Cause I don't need little Tommy getting our school nurse sick just right out. I mean, that's just, to me, common sense, respect.
So any student that goes to see the nurse should have a mask.
Yeah, I mean.
That that should be.
That just to me is common sense. I think that even when we go into the hospitals and clinics right now, they're requiring masks. I mean, mandatory. You know, I think that if I'm coming up to ask my teacher a question, if I'm coming up to my, you know, fifty-year-old, whatever. Grade school or high school teacher, and I'm now within, you know, a foot of him, and a lot of time you're talking, you know. Just respect for that teacher's space, I should be wearing a mask. There's some common sense. At the same time, we're in this room, there's a total of eight of us here. Uh we've got the one door open, and we're able to keep our six feet apart. I think then common sense should say. That, you know, Professor Block wouldn't have us wearing masks during this time, especially if we're just working on our homework. There's gotta be just the common sense element, and hopefully, again, we can check the politics at the door and just say, whether it's right or left. We want the school district and our teachers to be here, because if we do lose one teacher, we gotta remember this, there's thirty-five. Staff members, faculty members, for five hundred and fifteen students, or five hundred and twenty. So each person's, you know, if I lose one teacher, you know, that's responsible for almost the equivalent of how many kids? That we have to find somebody to replace, and if you start to lose two or three, that is a significant uh decrease on our resources. So it's very important for them to be here as much as possible. That's what I would throw out, Jim, is that we just need to use the common sense on it. What's everybody, everybody else thought on that? Because that's gonna be the issue that, you know, people are they're following, you know. Whether I have to wear a mask or I don't have to wear a mask.
Joel asked a question about, you know, like breaks, mask breaks. I'm I would assume that the elementary teachers a weekend are gonna go like. Hey, here's an opportunity for me to do that. Those things are probably gonna happen. They're gonna they're gonna find ways to get it done, I'm sure. Because I I mean, there isn't a, I'm just imagining a first grader sitting there in a mask all day long. That's not gonna work. They're gonna have to find ways to get breaks from that.
You know, if they can, the hallways, when they're moving about with the mask, I think in the classroom, you're probably, the staff is. I can.
Unless you're coming in close contact, there are times in the classroom where you should be able to take your mask off.
I can see some staff after a few weeks not having their students in the classroom with masks. But when they go on the hallway and when they come into school, I could see as we progress, getting to that point. But I don't know if we will. Hopefully, we will, but.
You know, I go I go back to the my number one goal as kids in the building.
Yeah.
And getting it right out of the, I don't wanna wear masks any more than anybody else.
Well, they they leave the room.
But we have to do what's right to keep the kids in the building. And checking politics at the door, I mean, this is a big risk to our budget as well. When, you know, if we lose one nurse or one teacher, and all of a sudden, we're hiring subs and, I mean, we don't, you know. We're running on a tight budget the way it is, so I just think we gotta get it right from the start, and I I like your idea of. Requiring the face masks, but giving the the staff leniency to, you know, kind of do as they see fit, because, let me tell you. After day number one, everything's gonna change. You know, the staff's gonna see opportunities to do things differently. You're gonna see things. Ways to do things differently, and so I think we just gotta start strong and kind of go from there.
What do you think, Aaron?
Pretty much what, I mean, he's laid out. I think it's whenever there there's traffic, they should have them on. I think that should be required regardless, and then in the classroom, I think it should be up to the teacher, whether they think it should be on or not. And to little kids, uh like Marty said, I mean, that's gonna be impossible to keep a first grader, to have a first grader keeping their mask on, you know. But I would hope in the classroom that they can, you know, take them off during, when they're just sitting there. You know, that should be, when they're not moving around, if they're just sitting in their desks, I would think they could take them off. Cause it's gonna interfere with their learning. If they're wearing a mask, and they're fidgeting with it and stuff, are they paying attention anyhow? The little kids.
Right, mm-hmm. I I just think it's important for the patrons to know, I mean, this isn't a decision anybody up here takes lightly. I mean, we'd rather come back, not have this meeting. We'd rather not have to worry about masks, we'd rather not have to worry about any of this stuff. But again, the bottom line is, I I I'd rather be safe than sorry. I'd rather have an ounce of prevention, be worth a pound of cure. I don't think there's any parent that's come up to me and said, boy, I loved distance learning last year. Let's keep my kids home again for another four or five weeks, and please, just let's do it over, I mean, not one, not one parent's done that, and so. We we are all in that cheesy saying, in this together, and we've gotta have everybody work together, try to keep this place open throughout the entire year. I mean, that's what our goal should be, and so if we can work together on that, and the patrons understand, I mean, the board's united in trying to be. Common sense, not just draconian one way or the other. Use of common sense and reasonableness here, we should be able to do all right. Are we good with that guidance, you think, then, for everybody on that, Jim? You feel comfortable with that? Board, Marty, you're okay with that? Joel?
Yeah, I'm good with it. I think the students are gonna take the ball and run with it here. They're gonna surprise us.
Larry, you're good?
Oh, yeah.
Aaron?
Okay.
I feel comfortable with that, Jim, and.
One thing that I did wanna mention that I didn't, uh when we were talking about the family, family responsibilities. You know, it's best if the parents get masks as soon as they are able to. Obviously, those that can't, um. You know, it's best if the parents get masks as soon as they are able to, obviously those that can't, um, contact us and we'll try to get something to them as soon as possible. But don't have the first day of school, be the first day that their child is wearing a mask. That, that's just not gonna work well for your child. Plain and simple. Have them wear a mask once in a while, start getting used to it, find out what irritates, what's not comfortable, those types of things. You know, it's, it's kinda like breaking into a pair of shoes, you gotta know if you're gonna get blisters or not, you don't wanna wear them in a basketball game the first night you ever wear them, so. Um, that's one thing I would say for the, the, the parents could really help this out with the ability to wear masks when we do need to. Um, if they can practice it a little bit before school starts.
You don't even know if I should ask this question, but I am gonna ask you, just, on the masks, if people are making homemade masks. I'm assuming that the dress code would follow the same dress code as what we have set up elsewhere. Meaning that we don't have a bunch of sayings on them or, you know.
It's funny you say that, cause I didn't even, come on, I was giving all the kids a credit that they would not have anything inappropriate on their masks. Yes, it would follow, follow that same guideline.
We just need to get it out there.
If anything, uh, was inappropriate or would cause a distraction or disruption to school, unfortunately, I'd have to deal with that.
Good.
So we, we would hope that it's.
Only Joel would come up with that question.
I'm glad you asked it though, I, I, yeah, I didn't even say anybody, so.
Melissa's so proud of you right now, Joel.
The next item that I have on here is, is a section that I, I was planning to have in here, but I, I actually forgot about it. I put it in my notes that I was going to put it in the plan, had explained to the teachers that, um, our two guidance counselors, uh, had put some information together. And so it's not a real in-depth section, but it's about social emotional wellbeing of students and staff. And they've come up with some nice resources for both students and staff, and they've also come up with some ideas of how they plan to, um, facilitate assistance for students and staff. As we kinda work through this whole situation, cause this is, well, obviously it's a stressful thing. Um, this has caused a lot of stress on a lot of people's lives, and so that portion is in there. And, and I'm, I'm happy that they've, they've put some things together, things together, and I appreciate what they've done. So that's, that's in there now, I did ask them if there were some things that they specifically wanted me to put in here, um, and when I get those notes, I will include that as well. Transportation, we've talked about even at, at our last board meeting. Our busing contractor has said that they will test, uh, the students that come on, he's purchased the, uh, um, the thermometers to do that. I don't know what he's doing for his driver's safety, but I would assume he's taking some precautions, they're probably going to wear a mask. Um, or some sort of a device that doesn't inhibit their ability to, to drive, but protects them as well, so. Any questions or concerns or suggestions on the transportation?
I would just assume that he's gonna follow, you know, any rules or, you know, the things that we have to adapt, he's just gonna follow along and, and do what we need to do. And he, and we know that he's gonna be, you know, cleaning the buses daily.
Yep, they did that last year, they cleaned them before and after each, uh, each situation, or cleaned them at least, it must've been after the, the routes they cleaned it. So that they were ready to go for the next morning, and then I, they cleaned them in between routes, um, the morning and the afternoon routes. The same kids on the bus, um, I, you know, if, I would suggest that they have, or at least ask them to have some sort of seating chart. And I think they need to, they need to fill the bus from the back to the front so that you're not crossing, has a lot going by other students as you're going to sit down. And then do the reverse as you come out. Most every school district that I've seen anything about transportation is, has done that, both for your routes and your activities, so.
We're pretty clear on the transportation, though, of course, they're not gonna do temperature tests going up to Voltech and they're not the CTE. Uh, student buses, are there gonna be those, are there gonna be?
Actually, I, the, the, the career and tech ed bus, um, I've informed, uh, Kevin that we probably won't use that, that we're gonna try to do that in-house. We only have a few kids that actually utilize the bus and the expense for one or two kids. I think we can have a, a paraprofessional or somebody, uh, use a school vehicle to transport those kids, that's kinda what we're looking at, I don't have that taken care of. Exactly, but, uh, number one, it's, it, it's a savings for the number of students that we're talking about. But it's also the ability to, to take care of that, that issue of whether or not the bus is clean in between, so. But I don't believe we're gonna have a lot of transportation during the day. When we do, um, I, I would expect that he has the buses sanitized in between each group. I'm, I'm guessing that's gonna be their, their, their common practice on a daily basis.
And I noticed, you know, there's not a lot on the activities and, you know, that type of thing, but like I mentioned, transportation is that, that's gonna be terribly difficult, isn't it?
You mean we get to the activities?
Yeah.
We'll get to that later on, that's one of the.
Okay.
One of the last sections here, so we'll get to that. Um, the next section that I wanted to discuss is teaching and learning, and the reason I wanted to bring some of this up. Learning what other schools are doing, getting a pretty good idea. Now, there, there's been other schools that are looking at changing their calendars, are looking at their daily schedule to try to accommodate their teachers having to teach students in the class. As well as having their, uh, responsible, being responsible for, for kids that are staying at home. One of the, the plans that I've, I guess I've seen, uh, several times and, and I'm, I'm liking more than another. Is that for the, for the families that are choosing to have their kids stay home, um, these school districts have, uh, distance learning plans in place. Where I have in here, um, Exelis, Apex, the BHSSC is Black Hills, uh, Special Services Cooperative. There's also the South Dakota Virtual School. All of those programs provide online learning, uh, that meets state standards, uh, so that parents can, uh, guide their children through that. And there, there's no teacher involved with the school district, there's an instructor involved with the program. Now, why would I say that? It's not that I wanna completely remove our kids from our school, however, if you're choosing to stay home from this point, there's a couple of things that I believe we need to have in place as a district. Number one, we need to have a, a deadline date for those parents to say, I'm gonna keep my kids home, so we can plan. I think that there should be a kind of a, a date determined as to how long those students will stay on that. The, the last thing I want is to see students that are gonna be here a week, for a week or two, and they're gonna distance learn for a week or two, and then they're gonna do that. That's already gonna happen when we have kids that are gonna have to go home because they maybe have symptoms or all of that. And we, we can deal with that because we have to, but when it's by choice, I, I want those folks to know that I think they should be committed to that. And we as a district should stand by that. And maybe I'm, I'm off my rocker and I'm gonna offend a lot of people by saying that, but I'm concerned about the load that our teachers are gonna have. And, um, I, I think this is a way for us to be able to say, okay, we have had, uh, family members, by the way, that have informed us that their children will be homeschooling. And they've sought out these same opportunities in other districts. Western Springs is a school that apparently has been doing this for a couple of years where you don't want your kid to go to a specific high school. You contact Western Springs High School, you enroll into their district, they give you the information to take classes over a course, over online, and then graduate from Western Springs High School, never stepping foot there. I don't agree with that, I don't like that system, but that system exists for families that want it, if that makes sense. And so, uh, the Exelis, what I like about that is it is a K through twelve curriculum. There are the core courses for, uh, K through five, then there's core courses for middle school, and same thing for high school. And so, um, it would provide the opportunity for some of our parents who have already said, I'm gonna homeschool my kids, I don't want them in the building, I don't wanna risk it. By us providing this opportunity, um, they, they can maybe do that and work at their own pace. And then our teacher wouldn't be responsible for both the in-class students, as well as however many decide to, to stay at home.
So with that, let's say, uh, there's a sophomore and they have to take geometry or biology, they can just pick and choose from those courses. Which ones they need to take to match the schedule that they would be taking here? So there would be any gaps in what they previously did.
There's not a guarantee that it'd give everything exactly the same, but when you talk about core courses, yes, I looked at the list and the core courses are all available. And there are, I was surprised as to how many elective courses that exist in the, uh, in the Exelis. Apex has a, a fair amount of elective courses as well. Um, the Black Hills Special Services, I'm not as familiar with, so. It's not a popular proposal that I'm throwing out there, but we, we have, we have things to consider with our staff.
Well, I'm looking at it, I'm thinking if they're gonna be doing this, if they've got their regular classroom in front of them all day long, and then they have the other stuff on top of it. Which what they were doing at home last spring, you know, it might not be the volume, but you still have to go through all the steps. So that's asking a lot.
I, I believe it is too, and that's, that's why I, I wanted to seek out some possibilities.
If, if we do flex, if people elect to do flex learning, does that have an effect on our budget?
Yes, um, wi- with Exelis, uh, it's a couple thousand dollars a year.
But we don't lose state aid.
We would get the state aid, if they remain in our district, if they, if they don't officially, uh, fill out the, uh. It's not homeschool, it's, uh, exempt, school exemption form. If they don't fill out the school exemption form, they're still our student, but we would place them in this program versus our classroom curriculum.
Okay, so that's true for flex learning, how about the homeschoolers, do they still, are they still members of our district?
The homeschoolers are exempt from our district, and so we get no funding for them. And the only thing that we need to provide is what we would normally provide in curriculum, and that is copies of the textbooks that we use.
And I just, I wanna get that out there, Tom, because that, that, that could have a huge impact on our budget as well. I mean, when the, when the public hears that and, and we're dealing with declining enrollment to begin with, and then now all of a sudden, if we have a bunch of kids not coming to school. I mean, funding's gonna be going down, or costs have the potential to be rising, I mean.
I would say the reason that I have, have looked into this is because of the number of the people that have, uh, shared concerns. The original amount is still fourteen parents that said, we would like you to contacts, to contact us for options. Now, perhaps me saying this and this being broadcast, it might, might increase some more. But I will still tell you that what we experienced in the spring is not what parents should want for their kids. There are homeschool parents that do an excellent job, and there are parents who would like to see that happen for their kids, but they don't have the means to do it. And the best, in my opinion, of course, I'm superintendent of a public school, but the best opportunity for kids is to be in school. And the distance learning is not what it's cracked up to be, it just isn't. It's never gonna be as good as face-to-face in-class instruction. I don't think it will be a hundred years from now.
So if they do, and students do do the Exelis or Apex, then our district will pay for them to do that, pay for that?
Yes, if we, if they chose to do that and completely, now, if they do that, I, I would say that we don't have these guidelines in here. But you're, you're not, you're not gonna be a normal student, you're, you shouldn't be going to our, you shouldn't be a spectator at our games. You shouldn't be participating in our sports, you shouldn't, you, you removed yourself, um, and basically said, I'm fine with my kid basically homeschooling. But you guys are providing me the curriculum is, is what it would be.
For example, if Tommy Santas is gonna do this program, but then does he think he's gonna play basketball, football, and track? He's saying, I can't come to school, but then I was gonna play the sports, now, hopefully we don't have that problem. But it's, it's not meant to be, uh, a way for students, you know, I think there was even a couple survey results or, I don't know, where students were looking for a way to stay at home. I mean, we want the kids in the classroom, if need be, I mean, we don't wanna encourage them to not come to the classroom, you know what I'm saying?
Maybe I could say this to provide a little bit different explanation is, what's the difference between this and somebody who's already homeschooling? We, we have homeschoolers in our district that legitimately are teaching their children, doing an excellent job teaching their children at home. They've got the means, the, the knowledge and the abilities to do that, but they're, they're either purchasing, um, some sort of a curriculum. Or they're, they're getting a curriculum from somewhere that they can follow, or they're finding the resources themselves, which would be a lot of work. And so they're already purchasing a curriculum. The parent that I spoke to this week that's planning to, to pull three students, two from another district and one from this district, um, is going to use a Christian-based homeschooling program. I don't know how much it costs, but I would guess it's not free. Do you know of a, a Christian school that's free? I, I don't know of one. And maybe they do exist, but that's gonna be the difference. That person, as a parent, is going to pay for that curriculum. Well, if we can offer something that's comparable to it, you stay in our district as a student, um, and you get to keep your kids home safe as what she's choosing to do. And it's, it, it also lends that opportunity for us to hopefully get those kids back when this is all done.
And let's not forget about accountability.
They still have to test.
But we have this continued declining enrollment, kids leaving the district, now we have accountability issues. Teacher funding, you know, teacher pay.
The accountability with the test part two is, um, homeschool students are, they're required to take the same tests that our children take in the school district. And so they're only tested at four, eight, and eleven, but, um, you know, if you, you've got children in those grades and you're homeschooling, they have to take some sort of a standardized test. And the state monitors that, the district monitors that. We have had some homeschool students that have actually come into our building and take the tests.
I think what the key thing is here, Jim, from looking at, you know, getting back to the initial question, whether we would use the Exelis, the Apex, or the BHSSC. You know, realistically, as Marty and you've said, it's a force multiplier for our staff. If we do have, you know, a few people, uh, there's always gonna be a few, I don't think it's a, a large group that's going to be doing this all of a sudden, thinking they can take advantage of it. But that, that smaller group could suck a lot of resources from our, our thirty-five staff members that are trying to provide the other five hundred, let's say, students that are still here. I think we need to focus on providing them what they need, giving them the good solid education. At the same time, keeping the thirty-five faculty members there focused on, the students are in the seats, in the desks every day. Knowing that we're gonna have kids rotate in and out, and they're still gonna have to be able to figure out on the fly how to get that stuff back and forth. And now, instead of having everybody at home, maybe there'll be days where there's five at home, eight at home, nine, ten, you know. That's gonna be a challenge every day for every one of our staff members. So I think this is actually a, a good investment, and then like you said, hopefully we can bring them back, Jim, you or Joel said that, once we get past this surge. I, I think this is a good idea, Jim, that we should look at using.
So if we would have a class, say a third grade, grade class that would have a case, and we would say, okay, that class has to quarantine for ten days. Would they go to this learning then, or would they go to?
No, no, this is for the kids that are saying right now.
Just, we're not coming.
We're choosing not to come.
We're choosing not to come because.
Give them this opportunity.
This is for the ones that are pretty much opting out August twentieth. And I think, Jim, if we do have a student that opts out on August twentieth, I mean, and we have to, getting to what Larry was saying about activities. We did set our policy as to how we, you know, if you're gonna participate in our extracurricular activities, I think that's still. That policy would still comply.
Yeah, that policy's in place, yeah, to kinda deal with that situation.
Policy was, Aaron, we've set a policy in order to.
Be in band and choir, you need to be here for band and choir class. If you wanna be in a sport or any other activity that's outside of the day, I can't remember what it was, it's either one or two periods a day.
Fifty percent, it's fifty percent at least.
Fifty percent, yeah.
I think it's at least fifty percent.
In the building.
Yeah. So I think that answers that question. We're good with it, I think, Jim, I mean, are you guys okay with, Jim going forward with that? Everybody, Aaron?
And I will follow up on, on, uh, what kinda monitoring we can do as a district. Because if the students are not technically homeschooling, we are still responsible for their accountability. I would like to know, I know with Apex, we can do that. With the Exelis, I would like to know what kinda monitoring we can do as a school district with them. And Exelis works both individually with parents, as well as we can set up a school system where we pay the, the cost of the, uh, the program. And, um, I believe we can, uh, receive information regarding the progress. If, you know, I, I will find out that information before we, we're full-blown on it. I put in an arbitrary deadline date for making that choice of Friday, August seventh, is that, are you okay with something like that, or? Meaning, most, if, if a parent is planning on keeping their kids home and they wanna use this route, let us know by Au- August seventh, so we can get those ready.
Is that enough time for the school to be ready for, I mean, that's ample time for everything to be.
That gives us about two weeks before school actually starts, um, and I've already made contact with Exelis, I just need to set up, um, our account. And then how we're gonna work the progress or the process, so. And they said typically, even when schools do it, it's on a case-by-case basis, meaning. Um, and they said typically, even when schools do it, it's on a case by case basis, meaning, when you have a student that's going to do this, you contact us, we get them enrolled, and they get going.
Larry says good, Joel, you good with this, Marty?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
You know, it's it's still important to note that our our staff is gonna be hit with a load. Let's let's say all these kids are over here now, the ones that choose to do that, we still are gonna have the situation where staff has to be here. They're teaching the kids in their class, and then there's gonna be some kids that have to stay home because of a family member having or whatever. And so there's gonna be the possibility of that distance learning being above and beyond what the classroom is. And so I guess the reason I'm mentioning that is, um, there there's a couple reasons where I may come and ask you as a as an administrator. Or superintendent, say, I really think we need to look at, uh, possibly taking a partial day off or a day off here and there. And and that could be for some planning time for the teachers, um, depending on how things are going, and the other thing that I may ask you that for is. Um, I didn't mention it when we were talking about our HVAC systems, but one of the things about HVAC systems is it's best to have your filters changed more often. We have a bazillion filters in this building, that's not something that they can do, uh, one evening and get it taken care of. If we actually need to change filters, because that's what we need to do according to checking them, I may ask you to say, you know what? Can can we have a planning day slash filter changing day, uh, and and let you know ahead of time so that we can plan for that? I don't wanna do it often, but I wanna do it as necessary, if that makes sense.
Kind of same token, Jim, I mean, what we do need to know is that. Every day we have an opportunity to be here and not take a day off too, is one more day we have under our belt versus being all of a sudden, like in March and April, where we were last year, I mean. Just every day we can get through here is a success. I think that as a district, we need to be committed to, we may have to be paying overtime, hiring a little bit more part-time help, or whatever it is. For janitorial cleaning staff at night to get things done, Jim, just to, I mean, if we have to invest money in. For something to be done at night so we can keep those doors open that extra day, I'd rather do that and just keep, keep this, keep this place open as long as we can.
The next item on the, uh, on the plan is the activities and and electives, um. This, I I'll be honest, this doesn't have a whole lot of detail here, the High School Activities Association has basically just said things are gonna be normal, and it's up to you districts to decide what you wanna do. Uh, with your your teams, your travel, your contests, the number of contests, um. Your spectators, your facilities, and so, uh, I'm just gonna be honest, there's not a lot of guidance from the High School Activities Association. I I don't know if they're waiting to see what happens at the college level or what's what's going on, they've met many, many, many times, so I I I can't really, um. Criticize them in the sense that they that they're not planning, but this is what they've chosen so far with their their decisions. The performing arts, it's still debatable whether kids should be singing, can they sing with masks? I I believe that what we will probably be doing with our curriculum, K twelve, is looking at more of a music appreciation situation. Um, in which we're not actually singing. I do believe that we could go outside and march with our bands, sixth grade can march, well, I don't know if they ever march, but maybe she can start it early this year. Uh, and certainly our middle, or junior high and high school bands can march. Those are things that they can do outside that I believe are safe to do, uh, because they can purposely social distance six feet or more if they wish to. Now, that's not, uh, a save all, what do they do in the days they can't go outside if it's raining or they, we're we're gonna have to find, um, curriculum that that works for those. Um, and spread them out, we did remove the, um. The the risers in the the music room so that they have more space without the tiers, uh, to move around, so. We believe that that's gonna provide a little bit better space for us to to separate the band, because you're kinda. You're you're within limits of the risers for the band and the choir, now they can spread out more in the entire classroom.
Jim, when's our first football game?
I honestly don't know.
So it's the Friday after we come back?
So if you.
Starts on the twentieth. School, yeah, yeah, Thursday is the twentieth, and Friday.
The second day of school?
Second day of school, you have our first football game?
Wow.
You know, I, we talk about, I mean, Larry, you've put it nicely, I mean, we can do all of these great things, and then we say, ah, that's all right, put twenty-two kids on a football field and. You know, sweat and spit and breathe on each other, um. I, we're we're gonna have to look at, I mean. It's gonna come up quickly, cause a lot of parents are gonna be buying activity tickets, you know, are we gonna allow just open seating for our football and, uh, basketball and our volleyball games this year, guys? Do we wanna have everybody coming in? You know, you see the NBA.
Practice starts next week, right?
Wow, practice starts August sixth, I think, is football, right?
Well, some practices. Well, some other practices also start.
Run your two.
Cross country and.
Cross country's like the thirteenth, volleyball and football are like the sixth or somewhere around.
Yeah, so, yeah, next week.
Do we limit the number of people that come in?
You may say could have delayed the start till we at least get a, let's get school going, and then phase into the activities, but. Activities first and then schools. We still want that twentieth of August, the first day of school.
I, I'll I'll just throw out, I think this is a big year for Bearcat TV. I I really do, I think that's a a.
A big deal and.
I mean, we're gonna try to take all of these precautions, but then we wanna fill, uh, the armory with. Three hundred people watching a volleyball game one night, and when we start those volleyball games, when they start at like four thirty, and the seventh and eighth grade girls play, and then the freshman girls play.
They all crossover.
And they all cross over, I mean, that armory is full at that point in time, cause there's very little room on the bleachers actually for people to sit. Are we, I mean, you don't social distance at the beginning of a volleyball game, that's not possible way we've got it set up right now.
Could we limit out of town spectators? I don't know, I'm asking, Larry, I.
I would, I would say this, now, first and foremost.
Only Ron Colly, you can put that on TV. For help, if you're watching anybody else.
Ron Colly.
Our athletic directors, uh, for the conference will meet. Um, I think I mentioned to you, Tom, was it the day of our next regular board meeting, I believe that's the tenth, they will meet in the morning. Um, and most of them will probably have a pretty good idea of what each community is looking at with discussion and conversation as to whether they're going to limit the crowd. And I guess I would recommend that we we possibly wait until then, however, that's. Uh, the tenth, that would be, uh, you know, that would be a two weeks before our full booking.
If I was to write before.
So it does give us some time to notify parents, but when you talk about spectators from other communities. The general consensus will be, and that's why our conference wants to have this conversation as a conference, if they choose to do something as a group, that's probably what we will go with. And hopefully, we can decide as a conference what's acceptable and what's not, and so. If if we decide to limit here in Webster, and that's what the whole conference is going to do, obviously, the spectators coming from there will be limited the same as ours. And that's what we would expect from the opposing team visiting us, is that they follow our guidelines, whether it's a conference guideline or our own individual guidelines. And we would have to, um. Do the same in kind when we're traveling, if there's another school district that we travel to, that says, we don't want any spectators, well, guess what? There won't be the spectators, there shouldn't be, if that's what they choose to do.
I'm good with waiting until the tenth and see what this group.
I'm good too.
Recommends and.
Yeah, you may have to take multiple buses and multiple, whatever, just the transport, but.
It depends on the group that you're using or talking about, because the the larger buses are fifty-five passenger, and with volleyball, it's it's very possible you could, you're not gonna get. Everybody in their own seat, but you could get pretty close to it. I will say that the the High School Activities Association has made recommendation that when kids are on buses traveling, that they're wearing masks.
So you play football, cool beans, but when you get back on the bus, wear your mask and dis, I mean, that's just, I'm sorry, I'll just, that's just to me, it's just a dumb.
And that's where we run into the issues, at some point.
How's it any different than kids playing on the playground?
Actually, I think it is different.
I don't.
I do. Think it's different, first of all, the kids on the playground, we got this whole big area out here, and we're not necessarily playing on contact sport, you know, where we're going out there, and we're serving one hundred percent. And and that type of thing, the other thing is this.
They'll make contact.
Well, but they're not doing the same thing, and the other thing is this, I like sports, I love football, I love basketball. But I will go with the Larry comment, I mean, we're here about education first, education first, and and I think recess is a. An important part of the physical activity to burn off steam so they can have the ability to listen to all of those classes. Uh, I I think there are health concerns.
The recess is in-house, when we travel, it's not in-house.
That's another big issue.
I'd be more worried about the opposing team's locker room than the players on the court.
And I think other schools would think the same of us. Right. I think everybody's in the same boat in that regard. I mean, I think that baseball example, I gotta believe the Philadelphia Phillies and the Marlins are not chintzy organizations, they're spending millions of dollars on these players, they're investing them, and now they've got a whole team that's infected. I mean, that's just. You know, and then they say, hey, South Dakota, aim on. I love sports.
This has nothing to do with us, but what has Minnesota decided, what they're doing, or Nebraska, or Iowa, I haven't. I'm just curious.
North Dakota's on, aren't they, Larry?
North Dakota, same as South Dakota, will proceed. Their support is small.
I think part of that, that philosophy is that we're so rural that we think it's, it's, we're a little less susceptible to to having a spread. And there's some truth to that, but there's also, we we could be setting ourselves up to some.
I do love a couple students from out of state that are coming to South Dakota, so they can play football. Cause their scholarship. Up on D one schools, they can't.
Like high school kids?
Yes.
Oh. Uh, the last item that I have on the the typed portion is is the food service, and really, what we plan to do there, we're gonna stagger the students. We'll look at using the, um, the elementary gym for lunches, we'll also look at using the classrooms, um. When we start looking at actual numbers and spaces, that's when we'll make determinations before school starts as to whether we're gonna use all those things. I have had some parents say, well, you know, can you give seven through twelve open campus? I think that would be detrimental, cause you tell me where those seventh graders are gonna go, huh, gonna go in a mob over to Casey's or a mob over to whatever. I, we can spread out, I believe we can spread out enough, uh, that we can have a safe distance with our our lunch program. High school is, that's the easiest probably solution out of all of this, because I only have two grades there, um, they could spread out, each, they have almost a half a table themselves. Uh, you know, one on each side, the middle school and the elementary is gonna be our our bigger challenge, and we have to do everything from staggering as they come into the the lunchroom. Uh, having, we we plan to put markings down on the floor, probably gonna see this motion a little bit on the elementary end. Stay this far away, now, obviously, they're not six feet in distance for some of those kids, but that's gonna be general, stay away, stay far enough away so that your your arms can't touch anybody. It's not gonna be six feet, but it's gonna be social distancing at at their level, so I believe that's that's gonna be a common practice when you're standing in line or you're getting ready to go somewhere is. Keep distance, don't touch each other, keep distance. So. With that, the, uh, the rest of the, the plan includes the thresholds, the educational delivery, and this basically is what will happen in each. We're currently in phase one, and phase one is the green phase, and we're gonna be in school, so we expect our students to be in school. Um, we expect them to be here with normal attendance, obviously, we have to take into account situations that arise, uh, symptoms, illnesses, all of those things. Um, the only ones that wouldn't be in school are the ones that choose not to be in school this fall. Going back to that, when it comes to a a family choosing, um, so that we don't have a revolving door into coming and going, coming and going. What's a reasonable amount of time, either a quarter or a semester, when you're talking about, you sign up for the distance learning, what's a reasonable amount of time, I'm asking that?
I would say at least a quarter. Just because they're not, well, how do the classes that are that are offered through that other program, how do they work, do they go by semester or quarters, or how do they work?
Um, I believe that they're just a, it's a curriculum and you can work self-paced. I know Apex is that way, Apex, you sign up for a class, you have one calendar year to finish it, if you can finish it in six weeks, you're done, if it takes you that entire year, it takes you that entire year. You're in the course for a year, so.
I'm just imagining, you know, if you're, I think it may be a semester, cause if if you come in, you know, into that program and you do it for eight weeks. And then you say, well, now I'm gonna go back, at the end of the first nine weeks, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna be in a regular classroom. Did everything that you needed in that first half of the semester prepare you for what's in the second half of the semester?
I sort of have an answer when I look at seven and seven through twelve, and I I would say it needs to be a semester, because all those courses are.
Are seminary courses, you're coming in halfway.
So it it really should be a semester for seven through twelve. But, you know, elementary is, if if somebody were to try it at home for nine weeks and if this isn't working. And decided that they were, yes, they were gonna send their child the second nine weeks, are we okay with that, or we go on a semester, you know what I mean? I'm just looking at scenarios.
Yes, I mean, I, actually, I'll be honest with you, with an elementary student. What if, I mean, what if you, if it's week two, it just doesn't work, and they just said, okay, we're going to be back and we're here, isn't it no different than if they just were moving from out of town? They just come back into the classroom, and we get kids that come in and out of classrooms all the time, just moving through the school year. I would say with an elementary student, uh, what we don't want is ping pong.
Yes.
That's that, that's a complete different scenario, but the person that pings and then comes back and says, no, that was not for me, I'm back. I'd throw out the elementary student can come back as soon as possible, cause we want them again back here in the classroom.
I I would agree with that, you know, when you talk about a quarter and a semester, I gotta refer to you guys, I mean, you're the professionals, uh. And I think it's different at the elementary versus the high school level, but I think we want the kids in the building.
Jim, I'd even throw out at the high school, as long as it's an informed decision, so the parents know what they're getting themselves into, and and they're not doing ping and pong back, I mean. They they might have some extra catching up to do, I mean, but it'd be just like they had moved. I mean, I, I'd be okay if they did it at the second or third week, it just, it it's not a, it's not a revolving door. I don't know, is that fair?
Can can we say that you get one move?
Yeah, one free bite at the apple. Would that work, Jim?
So, in essence, it would be a semester is what you're committing to, unless, you get one, one chance to come back sooner if it works, or if that's what you choose to do.
Do you see very many people that that would be the case, the people that are saying, I don't think we're coming? Do you see, do you know them well enough to know that, uh, they might flip on that, or do you think they're pretty committed to it?
I don't know.
Okay.
What's our, what's our enrollment date, September twentieth or something?
The last Friday in September, I believe.
They're gonna be, now, remember, if they're doing the Apex, they're already on our rolls, it's just a matter of whether that's a classroom or not, so. They're already on our rolls.
Yep.
I'm just saying.
I wanna throw out the example of a parent that has a compromised. Child at home, and they don't know what they have to do. Do we say, you gotta choose now and you never get a chance to? I I I don't think that's fair, I think we have to allow the door to be open. Just once.
Yeah, I just think we don't want it to be abused and 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 back and forth. But the parents that are making the good faith decision, and then all of a sudden, it just doesn't work for whatever reason. I guess the more I think about it, they shouldn't be able to come back at least once.
Yeah, but the reason I'm using that date is they can come back, but that gives them a month to. That has nothing to do with the age part.
The only reason I question that is, if, let's say, you're taking a biology course, and and halfway through the semester. You're moving on to something in Mrs. Center's class, and what you did with those other programs is, doesn't follow the same guidelines, and now, the second half of it. You needed what was in the first half, and you're you're just walking into a situation where it's like, I'm so far behind, I don't know what we're talking about. I don't know if that happens or not, that's the only reason I'm thinking that that might be.
And I don't know the answer to that, Marty, but I would contend with what Tom said, what what is different about that than a student moving into a district? Cause their parent got a new job.
Yep.
Same, yep.
And that happens. They come in with with different information from, or not different information, but different knowledge base on certain subjects, certain topics within a subject. And I think if it's done in good faith, that's the, that's the key, I mean, if if the kids coming in and trying to do it in good faith, I think most of our staff is gonna be more unhappy to try to at least help out, you know. if the kid's coming in and trying to do it in good faith, I think most of our staff is gonna be more unhappy to try to at least help out the young student. It's it's the individuals that abuse it. That's just what we want shut down, Jim.
And I think that's why many schools have put these things in place. There are schools that are saying, yeah, contracts required. In fact, I think that's the wording in the charts.
Yeah.
Is a contract's required, meaning we wanna contract with this family if you're gonna homeschool, not homeschool, but you're gonna do the distance learning portion. And then there's, some districts are saying, you gotta do it by this date, we wanna contract, and you don't get to come back until this date. So it unfortunately, that's why all laws and rules exist is because of the people who don't follow them or don't want to follow them, so. It it's guidelines so that's, you can kind of manage the situation, I think, is what it is.
I think, Jim, the guidelines are, I think it's good to have that August seventh deadline so we all know where we're at. At the same time too, Jim, I think it's good on a case to, case by case basis, hopefully, if we only have, you know, maybe thirteen, fourteen children that this affects. You know, it it can be decisions that are made in the best interests of the kid at that point in time in conjunction with the staff or excuse me, the administration and the parents. I I I'd wanna, I'd rather have the doors welcoming to have them come back.
I agree.
Aaron. Larry. Marty, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good. Okay. I don't wanna say that's it because there's so much more to take care of. Um but, you know, when we we talk about getting through the the black and white typed portion of of this plan, that's, we we've kinda gone through that. I know one of the things that that was asked of me is, well, what happens if this happens? Uh we've got the scenarios. What I've always said to anybody that's asked is, um if we have a case within our community, we're gonna follow the Department of Health. If I've, uh if we have a case that i- is either a staff member or a student, the Department of Health will contact me with my cell phone number. They have asked for the superintendent's cell phone numbers. It's the first time it has ever happened in in my career. But that is the purpose, is so that they can notify, regardless of what time of day they find out, they're going to notify a superintendent so that we can start our process as to to what we're gonna do. I will say this, you know, unless we really are well-versed in our in our um scenarios, which we can be as as uh prepared as possible, but the scenario might be different. If I find out something on a Sunday night where we we have a kid and and I can't determine by Monday morning what we're doing for sure, I may, I may have to call off school. I'm just simply saying, it might be one of those inclement weather type of things or inclement situation things where I've gotta have time to plan, clean, do everything else. That may happen. It all depends on who's the case, what grade and.
The old saying, better safe than sorry.
But again, I I don't want to be the expert in those situations. I want to be the person managing the situation. But I wanna use uh the guidelines from the Department of Health and anybody else that's in line to help us for that.
All right, gentlemen, do we have any questions for Jim? Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, this is a.
It's not done. I have a lot of work yet to do and and I truly want it to be a document that we can use and uh I I want a table of contents so people can reference some things. Gotta make sure we're consistent from one part to the other. There's still quite a bit that I'm gonna do with this yet. And it's it's gonna change. Um I'm surprised how much it changed from what, last Tuesday to Friday and then Friday to Monday. Not tremendously, but there is, there is, there is enough. Uh things that just were brought up that, hey, I didn't think of them.
Aaron, Larry, you guys got anything?
We meet thirteenth?
Yep.
Ten.
Ten.
Yeah, thirteenth is Thursday.
Oh, we meet on the tenth.
Yes.
Same day we find somebody that have info up.
That meeting's in the morning. Do you need a meeting?
The tenth is Monday, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got me.
I got messed up. Bernie said the thirteenth, that's the Thursday before, and then the eleventh, twelfth, tenth.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Myers informed me that they are meeting as a conference with the athletic directors that morning.
So we all have that information.
We have some guidance there. In all honesty, I I would hope that there's there's some additional guidance from the High School Activities Association. Anything could change with that within the next two weeks as well. So there might not be a whole lot of discussion then, so.
I would just hope parents would understand that we want the kids in school, I mean, school's more than just academic. It's, it's the whole structure of just cooperating and just language and everything to to be able to function as kids, you know, they need. So I don't want parents to say, well, like you said, politicize it. It's it's, school is more than just academics. There's a lot more to teaching these kids than. So I hope they don't make a big fuss about what we're gonna decide to do as far as in school with masks, no masks. You know, it's, kids need to be in school.
Yep. There's no question we're not gonna keep everybody a hundred percent happy.
No. But that wasn't our, that's not what we got elected to do. We got elected to help make the best decisions we can make to uh give our kids the best education we can give them and and I think that's what we're doing. There's gonna be a lot of tough days ahead, Jim. I wanna thank you for all the work you've put into this this summer. I mean, I know you've been working hard, putting all this information together and countless meetings, you know, trying to get it right. I wanna thank you for that. I just, I want the public to know that we're trying to get it right. And we're gonna make some decisions that are gonna come back and it's, it's always easy to look back and say, well, you should've done this or you should've done that, but we're here to do the best that we can do and that's what we're gonna do.
And there's probably gonna be moments where we're, within just a few days, we're changing our decision.
Absolutely.
Changing our mind, going a different direction.
I think it's important that the public can have patience, understand where where everybody's doing the best they can here and uh everybody absolutely has the best interests of the students, the staff, and our community at large at heart. And uh this is, this is what we wanna get done and and really keeping this building open. I mean, we may have at some point in time twenty positive cases and we're still running the school. I mean, no different than what they're doing with businesses everywhere across the United States. No matter what they're gonna be doing with colleges, you know, the the regions have got everybody back in the classrooms. I I think some of the kids start going back to school even August sixth or earlier, correct?
Our son goes on fourteenth.
Yeah, so August fourteenth. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts here and we're gonna see some things that we're gonna do right. We're gonna be really thrilled. And there's gonna be some things we'll miss. Nobody bats a thousand. We'll miss. And then we hopefully pick them up and we do a better job. So please, um if you've got constructive comments, reach out to Jim. If you've got the constructive comments, reach out. That's just the biggest deal. Anything else we got, guys? If not, then uh if we're good to go on our return to school plan, uh our next meeting is Monday, August tenth, seven P M. And uh I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, Joel. Second. Thank you, Aaron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.